The way it's.
I trust them did actually know.
Okay, I have six thirty. Called order meeting number nineteen oh one of the East Windsor. Town of East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are located. Live in the John Daly Room of the East Windsor Town Hall. As well as on the Zoom platform. We're going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, all.
Okay. We have a quorum, we have four regular members as well as one alternate. Wayne, I'm going to ask you to sit in on any voting that may take place this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any added agenda items? Or do not? Okay. There is no public, no legal notice. So we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda? Hey, is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay. We have approval of minutes. Previous meeting from July twenty second. Does anyone have any edits? Corrections? Comments?
Just as a couple little. Not important things. In establishment of a quorum. In line twenty four. There's Stacy's name and then it's repeated again in line. Twenty six. So I don't think it needs, she needs to be listed twice. As being in attendance. Unless there's something I'm not understanding.
Okay, so we can strike from line twenty six.
Okay. And. Spelling is. The. And then in line forty seven, there's just the letter B. And then in forty eight, there's a B again. I don't think you need B twice.
We'll strike line forty seven.
And that was. Oh, I don't.
Anyone else have anything now?
No.
No, sir.
No.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Add a couple.
Sure.
Um, line eighty six.
Line eighty six.
The applicant's last name. Instead of um. Always is more girl than R.
Sure. Okay.
Line one twenty nine. That uh five thousand twenty five should be five oh two point five.
Five oh two point five.
Yeah.
All right.
And then uh line one sixty. It says section D three B. It should read section five oh two point five D.
Five oh two point five D.
Yeah. Mine. Two sixteen. There's a um reference to EverSource.
Mm hmm.
It should say EverSource facility. And then. Uh lines two thirty eight and two forty. Airborne. This name they post are. It's the B A R. On your own. Line two forty as well.
Yeah. Two thirty eight, two forty.
Yeah. And then. Two forty one too.
Two forty one's got it.
It's in there correct, the rest forty three has got it.
They're hot, yeah, that whole pair, right, a couple. Let's leave the ring fingers. Um. Line three thirteen. The engineer's last name is Dyax. B I A K S. Um, that's. Same correction on line three point four. And then the last one, uh four ninety one. And yell. Is misspelled. Could be V A N E I, I mean I E L L E.
Hey. Want to have any other corrections or entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the draft meeting. Minutes from meeting nineteen hundred with the corrections we discussed.
We have a motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
A second.
I heard Wayne first. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 And it's approved. Seat of applications, we have three applications to receive this evening. EZ twenty twenty five dash eighteen, the owner applicant is Morello Airbnb. Charlene. Amoroy, Roger Morello, Morello Properties LLC. Is requesting a special use permit to use existing unit number three located on ninety five Main Street. As a short term rental with no changes to the structure or exterior of the building, the unit will be rented under thirty days. With off street parking provided, located on map ninety eight, block forty four, lot forty five, in the B two zone. Yeah, PZ twenty twenty five dash nineteen, the owner applicant is the estate of John Lada Junior. NRT Realty LLC, Robert Trigg, requesting a special use permit, site plan review. In accordance with section. Eight seventeen dash four of the East Windsor zoning regulations for a mixed use multifamily and commercial development. Located at one twenty seven Bridge Street, map one eleven, block twelve. Lots four, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, and the zone is planned commercial development. We have PZ twenty twenty five dash twenty, the owner applicant is Dr. Marcia Hughes. Marcia Hughes Health Services is requesting a special use permit for a group therapy. For fitness. Component home occupant occupation located at two sixty Skanek Road, map twenty three, block twenty two. Lot thirty five in an A one zone. These applications will be heard at a future meeting. Okay, performance bonds, actions permit extension road acceptance, we have none. We have no continued public hearings, we have no new public hearings. No old business. So on a new business, we have PZ twenty twenty five dash sixteen, the owner applicant. Is Plug Properties Group LLC, Eric Mo- Mogar. Is requesting a site plan modification for a commercial automotive repairs. And sales located at two ninety eight South Main Street, map two, block five, lot ninety nine. Zone B two. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application. Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Evening, Eric Mogar.
Sir, okay.
Yes, um. So prior to that, um, Mr. Arsenal, um, we put in for the modification on um approved. Site plan, just um. Increase the building size and um rotate it.
Any modifications from the uh? So from the previous side, you said you increased the building size.
Yes.
How much?
Uh, it's fifteen hundred square feet, we increased it to eighteen eighty four. Eighteen what?
Eighty one.
Sending it further to the north?
Yes.
Um, I I'll just start off, I have one question for you. I, you plan on having any kind of drains inside the building?
Inside the building, um.
Snow melt, walk in the floors, any of that?
No.
Oh, there's not.
And any snow melting.
I'm just saying, is it drains to catch any kind of water?
Well, yeah, yes, but.
And so in order to have drains inside an automotive shop, you're going to need to have an oil water separator. So. None is shown on the drawing. You're gonna have to let your architect know when they submit the final drawings and have to show location of an oil water separator.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any? Questions for the applicant? Start with you, Wayne.
No. Pretty straightforward.
And?
Landscaping with the building change, is the landscaping changing?
No, it's all the same landscaping.
Wait here, have anything?
No, we have gone through most of it last time and. Uh, yeah. I'm good.
Okay, Stacy?
I read through it, I don't have anything at this time.
Staff have anything else to uh ask of the applicant?
Yeah, discuss. Don't want to approach like most.
Yes. That's all.
Yes. So it would look like that building with a third.
Yeah, there's this two, mine would be a three bay.
You'll have an office stairs?
Yes, office, office space, extra space upstairs.
If the commission. This uh. Property went through a variance. Of the buffering. And then they came to the commission and went off CBA, so. Um. The plan's been reviewed. Several times. And the town engineer was satisfied with. Um. Drainage system because the impermeable surface is the same as it was originally.
Right?
And I would say. The approval to add oil water separate.
So we'll make that a condition five A. Conditions that must be met. Prior to submitting the final plans. Location, the oil water separator will be shown on the final.
Okay.
Nobody else has any other? Questions or comments, so entertain a motion in this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application easy. Twenty twenty five dash sixteen. For two ninety eight South Main Street. Site plan modification to construct a new. Eighteen hundred thirty square foot commercial use. With cars for vehicle repair and sales with associated improvements. The owner applicant. Plug Property Group LLC. Eric Mogar. In a B two zone, the approval is granted subject to. The conformance with reference plans as may mo- as may be modified by the commission and this approval. And the following conditions, the conditions come from. A memo to the commission. From Ruth Ann Calabrese dated. Eight four twenty twenty five. It references the plans and has eighteen conditions. But we will be adding another condition. There are conditions which must be met. Prior to the submission of final plans. The added condition will be five A. And it will say location of the oil water separator to be shown on final plans.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Three seconds.
Second by Wayne. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, you have your approval.
Here you go.
Yes. Good job.
Aye.
So under other business, we have an informal discussion. By Nick DeLuca on Depot Street.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, okay, I'm Nick DeLuca. And I'm David Brook, gonna give you guys some material.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for hearing us out, or uh, we've got a small booklet here just to work through, uh, my name is David Brook, I am one of the co-founders with Nick. Um, our intention and plan is to focus on a site that is ninety two Depot Street in Broadbrook, just at the road. Um, it was previously noted as ninety six, if you'll find that in the GIS, but a a four thousand square foot. Uh farmhouse was separated with that, the current owner is Johnny East LLC. Um, I'm gonna have him skip a little bit of just the first part, that's just for your reference of who we are. Um, just a little background on experience levels. He had mentioned, uh, I think it's Mr. Kowalski, that you'd go into Maine, where I just finished up a project up there for a fifty four unit luxury condo development up there. Um, with fantastic amenities where we focused on really providing uh an excellent experience for people to walk to the downtown of Portland, Maine. Um, in an area that the community was looking to see some development there. And um I I saw some similarities, at least in in our our own desire to uh see Broadbrook flourish as much as possible. Uh, Nick and I personally partnered on the next one, which is Line Street Estates, that's in Manchester, and the reason I reference that is simply because. The quality of construction uh set a level uh for that town where uh most were. Uh seeing uh, you know, a mid range of pricings and we set records on pricing there by demonstrating high quality. Uh on the edge of a golf course there, where we developed six lots and the town was very thrilled with what we were doing with that, we took a defunct property. And uh and made it into something exceptional. Um, but for our site that we're looking at, that's the next page, ninety six Depot Street, it says ninety two in your front, but just ninety six for the uh sake of the the GIS system. We believe that it is uh, you know, underutilized at this point and full of potential. Um, and we believe that it can bring uh some housing to the area specifically of Broadbrook, not only for those who are. Downsizers, but those who are also newer families to the area, we want to focus on walkability uh to the area, but we also want to focus on bringing single family uh residences. Um, that we feel like would fit and integrate well into uh the already existing area, we know that across the street. There's current uh, you know, older uh community, uh fifty five and older community developments there, but um we want to focus on a single family, non restricted homes that are there. Want to ask you to flip to the next one, this is the proposal, to keep it as streamlined as possible. This is what we're looking for, this was proposed by our. Um, site engineer Pete Parent, uh with CHA, who I know Mike works with as well, we thank him for his collaboration with this. We're looking for thirty three uh units to be developed in this area with a cul-de-sac. Uh like formation, uh we're looking at, um, obviously you can see uh. Single family residences here, um, this would normally in this sort of zoning for um for ten acres allow us to get about twenty lots here. Um, and with some open space that we're proposing as well for an additional. Uh, you know, two units per acre would give us another uh eight, so that puts us to twenty eight. Um, in this site, we believe based upon our understanding of the zoning uh regs, that we'd be able to get around forty units, we're not looking for that density at all. Uh, we're looking to make this as feasible financially and economically for ourselves, as well as uh for the project to keep the pricing as competitive as possible. Um, we're not looking to set record prices here in this area, we're looking to create attainable houses. Um, with uh with good quality materials for people. And uh and bring new residents to the town, we believe that that's something that's needed, Nick and I are both involved in the brokerage business. I've been involved in real estate since two thousand nine as a real estate appraiser, and I can see the values have been increasing here in the town. And finding access to good quality new construction can be a challenge. Um, so we want to provide that in that area, we feel like that would fit really well in with Skinner Drive and a few of the other developments that are nearby. So what we're proposing for this, not only in this informal hearing, um, you can see the opportunities, obviously, that I've I've touched on briefly. Um, but we're proposing three different styles to be built here, um, and I've even given you a couple of examples. Uh, the first is a a ranch style property that's really attractive, we actually modeled this, this is a smaller version of what we built at Line Street. Um, this is around an eighteen hundred square foot uh floor plan here, and I gave you just a rendering of of what we had developed, that's on the next page there, it's a beautiful. Um, beautiful look to it, we do a really good job with the developments. Next is a cape um that we'd like to see developed, and then flip to the uh following uh. Picture afterwards, we actually sold that property and that was a really good example that we sent over to our designer. Um, that's in uh development called Copperbrook. In Granby, Connecticut, and it was a very, very, very similar development to what we are proposing to do here, it was award winning. It was um mentioned at several different magazines due to that, they they just did a high quality craftsmanship, along with the density complimented there, it was about. Half a minute uh to get to the downtown and create walkability for people as well. Um, we feel like that would do the same here in Broadbrook, so that's the cape. And then the last one would be something that we may see show up, which would be a colonial. Um, we believe that there are going to be uh. You know. We want three different selections for people uh to have that as well. Okay, so in order to do that, uh, as referenced before, the MFDD zone, we're looking for an additional half. A dwelling unit. Uh, in the text amendment, and you can see here, if you look down to density limits in section E, we're asking for half an additional dwelling unit per the acre of developable land. On a track where fifty percent or more of the abutting properties are nonconforming. Pursuant to the underlying zoning uh district's minimum building area requirements, the reason that we. Decided to choose that in collaboration with our site engineer was simply this. Um, if we wanted to make something that worked for the town. That was not going to be imposed on many other sites in the community. And so we wanted to make something that was uh very focused for this particular lot and that to not be intrusive, we can understand if you're making a text amendment and applies to lots of other sites. In this particular one, it applies based upon our research to two other sites. Within the area. And those two other sites um. Do not apply with uh the fifty percent or other of abutting properties that are nonconfor- that have fifty percent of uh abutting properties that are nonconformant. Um, and so this really, this text amendment narrows in specifically to ninety two, if you want to call it ninety six Depot Street. And I believe achieves a win win for not only the town of uh East Windsor, but the village of Broadbrook to to bring some necessary housing um to the area. Um, our future path, just to give you an idea for this, um, we understand that we are in a very unique market that started back in the COVID era. And um I I'm in the brokerage business, Nick is in the brokerage business, our phone rings off the hook all day. Um, we sell over five hundred properties a year and that that sounds like a lot, it is, we're rated on the Real Trends um. Board and and I'm not saying that for accolades, I'm just saying that for simply. We hear the voices of what people need right now and they get tired of trying to see resale properties that are not in the condition that they want. And they're having to pay over asking price to get them and not having the money to be able to to fix them up. And so this gives us an opportunity to be able to ride some attainable housing for individuals um at great quality condition, we. Hope and look to CDU to find approval for this, and we know this is just an informal, but we hope to meet with you again soon for an approval meeting and by, you know, Q three, we hope to have it approved. Q four to begin pre-marketing and eventually close and then begin construction early next year to provide that housing uh for individuals. Um, and families um uh starting in in the beginning of next year and then finish out within about a year. Thank you.
What's zoning there currently?
Do you want? Yeah. Yeah, so the zoning is, we're in the village district and zoning is R two there.
It's an R two.
Yeah, so.
And you're. You're looking for, you're looking kind of two step, you're looking to have it rezoned. To an MFDD.
We're looking to rezone to MFDD.
And then you're looking for modifications to what can be done in an MFDD.
Correct.
It's currently MFDD is only allowed on Route five and on one forty, correct?
Unless it's elderly.
Unless it's elder.
Oh.
Age restricted.
Age restricted. And. Something that's just sticking out. Strike, this tends to be like for apartments and condos.
Not. Single family homes.
The whole second of the reg, it goes. Apartments, condos, planned residential development. Right?
Yep. Is this, you're planning as individual homes, not an association?
It would be individual, single standalone homes, part of that text amendment. Was, so part of the text in the MFDD zoning indicates that you get bonuses, but the bonuses have to be multifamily units, we thought that single family detached would fit more with our proposal. Um, and also, you know, we thought that it would give people more privacy, it would be a little bit more uh desirable for people looking to move into a subdivision like that.
It's kind of contradicting what you're asking for, you're asking for to zone it as multifamily, but not create multifamily.
I think within the MFDD zoning, uh as far as my research, there was, there were sections for single family. Um, so, you know, single family standalone and MFDD as far as, as far as what I read. Um, but I did see some.
Would those be like condos that are on land owned by an association?
Yeah, and. And I'm curious if the density. Applies the same to single family home versus. Multi unit homes.
Well, we saw was a base density of two per developable unit. So, or per per developable acre, so that would bring us to. That would bring us to twenty units. And then. Two per acre of open space. So if we were proposing to donate four acres of open space. That would bring us an additional eight units to bring us to twenty eight. And it, yeah, it's section eight point two and change.
So under.
So we're looking for essentially an additional five units. Um, the the max, which I saw on the on the zoning was four units per acre, so that was forty total, if you went for all the bonuses. Um. We're not looking to do something that dense. So with the, like the quality we're describing. You know, we want to kind of. Keep it within a range that we think people would really like and we want to do that standalone. Um, so we're essentially asking for five additional units, but not trying to max out at four.
I'm still trying to find where.
So.
Multifamily allows a single family.
Well, there's a um. If you look at eight oh two.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Yeah. See.
You could redline.
Eight oh two six.
This is invisible, okay, eight oh two point six.
When you go down to plan and residential development.
Mm hmm.
So, planned residential development, single case detached residential divisions in accordance with section eight oh one of these regulations made permitted in the multifamily development district. After obtaining a special permit and a subdivision's lawful. Planned residential development shall be. Reps to the maximum large density to be determined as follows. Two lots per acre, which I think might be. This is coming, but two lots per acre of developable land. On the parcel to be subdivided. One point five additional lots for each acre of land being deeded as open space. To the town or an approved conservation organization. One point five additional lots for each single family development right being transferred. Back from one or more. Um. Sites in East Windsor. And in no event shall there be a lot density of more than three point five. Building lots per acre of developable. So.
And. Um, what is your final number that you're asking for?
We propose thirty three.
No, I said three point five.
The density.
The density, how many buildings per billable acre?
So that would be two, two, two with the additional uh. Half an acre, so two point five.
Two point five. The reg allows up to a maximum. The reg allows up to a maximum three point five. I'll let, I'll let others speak. I got, I got two other points, but I'll, I'll hold off. Wayne, do you have any?
Any sidewalks involved too?
Yeah, we've been, you know, looking at the site engineering for that and we've added some in the additional, the entry points there. So that way people can walk around, you know, within the community and then, you know, connect in.
You connect the walkway to the ones that cross the street.
That's what we're thinking.
Alt for no.
Yeah.
I am just somewhat confused if you strike the multifamily. In the density limits. What that does. Somebody else coming through these regs. They seem to have been designed for multifamily. Units and they would no longer be designed that way.
What? What do you think of the idea of instead of changing the text, they're changing it in? They're in three. Eight oh.
Eight oh.
Two point six.
Subsection three, you're talking maybe?
But yeah, three instead of.
Which one are you looking at? Eight oh two point?
I'm looking at eight oh two point six.
Six.
Three. And residential develop. Here it is.
So changing the text amendment to that section.
Because that's essentially what you're.
Yeah, we got it.
Single family houses.
We talked about that when we met with them. One of the things that's confusing about the way that that's written above is that it talks about the use of the term subdivision.
They're going to sell individual lots.
They're going to have to do a subdivision.
Isn't that what this is? Or is this commonly owned land that under thousands?
You're selling.
Doesn't propose individual lots, right? It's not the simple parcel. It would be a single parcel of land with thirty-five dwellings on it, correct?
It, we, we'd prefer the single lots if possible, but if the route we have to go is is the like PUD idea, then we can do that as well.
As the definition in the regs for the PRD is a single family detached residential subdivision incorporating open space conservation asset fourth and eight oh one.
Yeah, there were restrictions in PRD when we had gone through this that kind of lent, lent us to go in the MFDD direction.
Then they would not be individual lots, then. It have to belong to an association or.
Association.
Yeah.
I don't think the MFDD would allow for the individual lots. I mean. I mean.
There is going to be, there is going to be an association.
No, I think the PRD is.
Joette and. There's two proposals. Our ideal proposal, our ideal route would be for individual lots. That would be the most ideal. We feel like that serves what people are most looking for. In order to achieve the density, otherwise to make, otherwise it's generally infeasible. If it needs to be as a PUD, we can reformat marketing. We can reformat a few different things in order to get it there. It's just a preferable route that we'd rather have in order to achieve that. We looked at these regulations at nauseam at these points and that was the the path that seemed to make the most sense. If to the commission, the commission feels like there's another area of where that would make sense in order to bring this housing to the community, then we're open to that idea as well.
Yeah, and and we also think if we can have individual lots, that's going to be a little bit more cost effective for the families that are going to live there. Because they're not going to have associated costs and that kind of thing. So we really are trying to achieve a a good quality and something that's attainable for people. We're not trying to build three thousand square foot houses or anything like that. That really is our goal and we have gone through these regulations. I mean, I've read through the entire thing multiple times and trying to piece it together. We, we thought we had our engineer look at it. We had some meetings here informally. And we thought, you know what? We have at least a good idea of what what we want and what we think we can do that's reasonable and will get some housing to the town. So we thought, let's come in, talk to you guys, show you what we're thinking. If you have a couple of other ideas, directions you want to point us, we're, you know, we're, we're open.
What's your idea of reasonable housing?
In terms of size.
Right.
About price. Pricing, pricing under five hundred K in order to, for a starting point for people.
Okay.
Yeah. That's very, that's very reasonable.
Yeah, that's, that's our model. Yeah, for new construction, especially with infrastructure, we're, we don't have to get into cost and stuff, but.
No, exactly.
Under five hundred thousand is our goal. We want to be under five hundred thousand for nice homes in a nice subdivision and we want to give people the lots if possible.
Yeah. Once you bring in the association, just we, we've realized that from what we've heard so often, people have opportunities to find condominium projects that they're part of. PUDs would be one step into that direction if we needed to take that for the text amendment, in which case we look to make it as. Non-restrictive as possible to the community members and a very, very small fee in order to comply with that and for insurance purposes. But single family, you know, residential is is the ideal pathway. And it feels like it fits within the community. If you just kind of look around within the area, it seems to fit their best.
And that's where we, we, where we kind of came up with our square footages for the homes that we're proposing to offer. They're not final designs yet, but. Something in that square foot range that we're offering seems to be reasonable in terms of being able to keep the cost down for the, for the unbuyer under that five hundred thousand mark.
Really, if I'm understanding you, what you're saying, in my mind. The MFDD concept. And the section you want to change is all about family. Yet what you want to do is more single family lots. I'm not convinced that the section you're editing is the right section to edit.
If it's Miss Coda and Mrs. Coda, yes. To your point, it is that our ideal pathway is that based upon our review of the docs. Or the regs, excuse me, the MFDD was an option that you could go with a PUD opportunity. Or if the commission was open to the idea, then we could make a text amendment or as Ruth Ann scheduled. Uh, suggested, excuse me, to PRD. And, you know, make a, you know, a text amendment there in order to achieve it.
That could be a series of dominos. Or is it then, if that, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit. Take it out.
We like what we proposed and had some collaboration with our. If you just note, once again, back to our text amendment, it does indicate. Language that would preclude most properties in the area.
Yeah, so, so the, the section E of the text amendment. It is really, I believe, and we did some due diligence on this. Only applicable to, to our lot. When you're trying to go into MFDD because going into MFDD, from my understanding, has to be in the village district. So we went through and looked at every lot on the village district that was not developed. And there were only, there were seven parcels over four acres. Four of them are owned by the town. So there are three privately owned parcels that were over four acres that would potentially be eligible for MFDD in the future. One of those, based on the GIS map, was like eighty percent wetlands. I don't even know if it would be developable. One, I'm not sure if there's public water sewer. So I think it would, frankly, I think it would affect. One at best, three at most, but the bottom part of that text amendment, I don't believe would affect any other lot. So those strike throughs would affect potentially three. And the bottom part would affect.
Only ours.
Only ours.
At which point do we, are we just offering them a fair? And we can't, okay, just ask me.
Without going MFDD, how many houses did you guys figure you could put in this?
So MF, so from my understanding, and I read through ad nauseam multiple times, and I could be wrong, but from my understanding, there was a base of two per acre. So that brought us to twenty. There was a bonus for open space. Four acres of open space gives us two more. That gives us twenty-eight. We would prefer not to put duplexes. It says a bonus of a multifamily. So I mean, we would put duplexes, which we can do. We would, and it's more cost effective for us to put duplexes, plus us less money to build a duplex. We would prefer though to have people have their own lot on a single family detached unit. So that's why we were asking for that top part of the text amendment. It's honestly less cost effective for us, but we think it's better for the subdivision in general. We think it's more desired because. So, so that gets us to twenty-eight. There's other bonuses that we could go for to try to get us to forty. We don't see forty going there. We're trying to get to thirty-three because thirty-three is a number that's feasible with.
That's, I was looking at, where's your break even?
Yeah, like thirty-three is like a feasible number. So it's really like, the twenty is kind of there. Then the twenty-eight we can get to if we had to add duplexes, if you could add duplexes, get to the twenty-eight. But we're really looking to get to that thirty-three. We're not trying to go to forty. We're really trying to get to that thirty-three. So we're looking for five additional units and that's where that bottom part of the text amendment came in. That was something that was. Our, our engineer came up, we talked to, to him a bit about it and we thought it would only affect our lots. It would be reasonable. Because it's not going to affect other people. It's not us going for like that maximum density of forty with those other bonuses. Because we're still trying to do that single family detached. So we thought it was like a reasonable compromise.
Remember when we had. Say that commit MF, MFDD. If we start striking things and doing these things, I just don't know what it does to that or to. Other people who may come in.
I, I want to.
Just wondering if there should be a whole new.
I want to back it up even further, saying first and foremost, you need a zone change.
Yep.
Normally, when we do zone changes, it's either something that is in the middle in, caught in between a couple of zones. And it's usually contiguous with what zone you want to change it to, that you're abutting a similar zone and the expanded zone. What you're asking for is spotzoned.
Well.
Hundred percent that it's just.
The MFDD designation, it can't be contiguous.
Yeah, because the MFDD has a citing requirements.
I mean, certainly we have it cited as Route five and one forty. So to go outside of that.
That's for apartments. The one, the Route five, one forty is only if you're citing traditional apartments, multiple units in a single building. The other citing stuff is, if you look above in the regs, it talks about. But, well, it doesn't actually list them, but it has the, the letters associated and it lists the citing criteria.
That's in the beginning, but.
Well, just above the amendment that they have.
Are they eight oh six?
Eight oh two. Eight oh two point six. Eight two. Six, there's not a two point six.
Eight, eight, two point six. Two, so it's. They were teaching. I think you're looking at eight oh two four. Right above it, it defines. Because it says that. Condos.
Yeah, so these are the citing criteria. Yep, yeah.
Four acres.
So it lists based on the type, what it can and can't be, which is what Merrick amended. So he amended the applicability to add the not located in.
In a rural area.
Right. So that his site would be eligible for. Something not all that similar because he has single, he was looking for single family detached, single parcel. I don't remember what the density is because that was a really big piece of property.
But it's the same concept, trying to get a bunch of units in.
Well, he amended the density requirements that are in there. Yeah.
Well, this is, this, is that still applicable saying that it has to be located within an R three zone? What do you mean? Property to be rezoned is located within R three zone.
Right, that was, but that is for just whatever it's describing above. It's not for all MFDD. It's for the A, C, E. Right, so A is, I think apartments, C is condominiums, E is elderly and P is the PRD.
Yeah. Can't get that out of my head. Sorry.
So based on the, the description of the, let's go through those letters. Yeah.
That's what he's looking at.
E somewhere that. This would follow that, right?
That's, that's what I'm starting. I want to even, you know, is, is this parcel eligible to be rezoned as MFDD?
Well, they're, they're current, currently from what they're trying to do, they're saying that they need to be, change the, the eligibility standards, which is what the red line.
But that would have to go to eight oh two point four. The red line doesn't show anything eight oh two point four.
That's just the dense hoping.
So you're saying, does the site itself?
So, yes.
Is in the R.
Because I'm going to note too that like it's R two right now.
Yeah, I'm re, I'm reading this that it needs to fall into R three.
For, let me go to what section, yeah, what are you?
Eight oh, eight oh two point four.
Eight oh two.
One.
Eight oh two point C. Uh, so this would be, I guess it would be.
I got to start out as a R three.
I'm looking at C. Well, where does C one apply?
Well, it would be. Kind of go.
That's.
It's A, C, E and P.
Well, A says it needs, that needs to be a minimum four acres, which they meet the, the four acre requirement.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we'd have to, does it still stand for the Route five and one ninety-one? Has that verbiage been taken out?
That's for A only, so they wouldn't.
Okay.
Served by public water and sewer, that's.
They, they meet that criteria.
Served by city water.
Located within the village area, non, non-rural area or located within a rural area residential growth guide plan for commercial development, which currently it's not.
Located in a village area.
Right, so then those others.
Okay.
Those, those other one, two, three, four, five, those, that citing doesn't.
Okay, so that's meant, but now is, yeah, it must be within our three zone.
BPRD.
Where you.
Looking, as we've, we've gone down C, now C one.
That is, however, if the site may be, may be located within a rural area as identified, if the following criteria have been met. So he has to meet one through five if he's in a rural area, but he's in a village area, so he doesn't.
Only applicable to rural people? Okay.
The one through five is the Merica men.
Okay.
So, but see how it says, however, for C, if the site, the site may be located within a rural area as identified, as amended, provided all the following are, are met. So that one through five apply only if it's a C. Within a rural area.
Where does, and where does the village area stop on the? They are still considered in the village area. Okay.
So you can skip one through five and go to D.
Okay.
By committee, we'll understand them.
To us, I mean, again, we've done this. It's like enough time.
So this is like really fast.
This thing, biggest thing I'm trying to avoid is spotzoned.
Totally understand, totally understand. Yep.
We, we went through.
We went through all that. We've taken up Ruth Ann's time at night.
Yeah.
You see.
It's an R and D.
And we're really in development there. To clarify, spot zoning is not just the changing of a zone to create an island. It's to doing so in a manner that is in conflict with your comprehensive plan. So if there's support for changing a zone and it's in the P O C D, then you can do it, even if it doesn't, it's not contiguous. So it's, there's sort of a two-part.
But our current P O C D talks about.
Housing.
Yeah, but.
Need for more housing.
P O C D actually laid the framework for these regs. You can see the same exact language.
Because it pulled from that.
Expect that whole visibility section, guidance in the P C. So there's maps in there that show those areas, what they're talking about.
Because there was no amendment to that growth plan between the.
So let me understand then what in our current subdivision regs prohibit this from happening? If he went straightforward with a subdivision.
Size, lot size, he won't get as many.
Lot size and frontage.
Minimum buildable area and all those minimum, which gets you to that density.
Because then the other part with the. Open space. We've kind of. Lean towards open space only if it's contiguous with existing open space to eliminate this patchwork of open spaces.
And useful.
That's not of any use to anyone.
Right.
And just becomes another area for the town to have to maintain. So we have instituted a fee in lieu of open space.
Which also is, it, it makes sense with, with density. It does. It's like, you know, one hand can make that happen if the other. Gets the.
And the PRD allows for the, I would just read the subdivision ranks. Was allowed for that.
So if he eliminates that four acres of open space and pays the fee in lieu of, does that get you the density number that you need? Including that additional four acres?
Well, it's the, it's the. Um, starting acreage that determines density, not the acreage minus the open space to be dedicated. So he's not getting. So he's not getting, he's getting credit based on the tenant change. So he's going to have to amend.
So that would have, is that the spot to to address saying if you pay a fee in lieu of open space? You can pick up that additional density.
Well, the commission decides when to take the fee. So.
Right. But I bet we did. Didn't we lay that out in the open space regs as far as being contiguous or of. Now, I know we talked about it somewhere when we were with open space that.
We do have, we want it to be.
Yeah.
Scampic.
Contiguous.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a whole, let's like. Calling this the PRD. So. Considerations for the commission are laid out here and laid over. You have a significant size, meaningful contribution.
Okay.
The open space network.
Significant community development, no. Protecting important historical, no.
Things to go down that list.
But in the end, if they agree with due fee in lieu of that solves.
Other than the multifamily bonus part.
Oh, so without the MFDD bonus, you still can't get the density that you're.
It's just that we would prefer to do the standalone, single family possible, but the zoning still. Even if it's, even if we got the density for fee and Lou, bonus for open space. And we were able to achieve that density through the fee and Lou, it still regulates that we put up multifamily homes instead of single family detached. Right? Within the MFDD.
I thought we just found it.
Are we going to PRD?
I think.
If we're going to PRD, then I'm mistaken.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want individual lots. It's 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 a PRD and going through the subdivision rate.
Okay. All right. That makes sense.
It does.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of, I think, the avenue to look at is will the subdivision regs and the PRD? Get you to where you want to be.
With the fee in lieu of.
Right. Doing a fee in love and not providing the four acres of open space.
Right.
So let's take a look at that. What does that give us? Well, it's according.
We have this like it's like calculations. It's going to be the baseline density for the for the PRD in that zone is one point five units an acre. So you're still going to have to make an amendment to that calculation. Density. So it would be, I guess the commission could authorize an increase in density, provided they make certain findings or there's certain criteria.
Fifteen units.
Yeah, I mean, then we'd have to start looking at setbacks and screening buffering, that kind of things. Yeah.
I appreciate the. I look at that as buffering the way it's laid up.
Yeah.
And not so much open space parcel. It just, it wouldn't tick the boxes.
No.
And that's, I think semantics as to what the commission uses open space.
Well, they were talking about being deeded to the town, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just saying what they, how they laid out that.
Yes.
Concept plan is to me, that's serving as a buffer.
There's just group pay for development.
Then the semantics of it is then who who's maintaining?
Oh, and the trouble we're going to cause going behind somebody's yard to get to it to maintain it. Then then somebody is going to start claiming it's theirs, even though it's not theirs.
Thank you. For all the the tenants in here for the commission to consider. People, I I can't imagine you'd find that is ticking what needs to be ticked off. Which might help. In the layout of lots.
That could be like a conservation easement restriction so that it couldn't be cut down or whatever to preserve the buffering, but I agree that. Still looking at in blue. Situation.
I I will mention to you that when we approved this subdivision or or. Guess that's what it's called, subdivided this piece of property from the house. We had a lot of the abutters here.
Or up.
Basically saying, now that we're going to have somebody come in here and try to put now fifteen twenty houses in there. And it wasn't, it wasn't said into those words, but I mean, they were, we were given the impression that it was, they were looking at. A single family horse farm type dwelling going out for this property. Um, so you will get some objection of the abutters.
Without every one of them. Yeah. We're all.
It was emotional.
Yeah. And at the end of the day, too, like David had said before, I mean, we were in the in the real estate business and we do see the the need for housing in general broadly, not here at Broadbrook, but just in general. And new construction at an under five hundred price point is like extremely rare. So nonetheless, we we do think it's something that's needed in Connecticut broadly and something that we can achieve and do.
As as people move into an area of R one, R two, R three, at each level, they're expecting a certain amount of privacy, space.
Yeah.
Send back from the neighbor.
Exactly. That I I would, I would try to advise to try to see if there's. Any way you can meet what your requirements need to make this profitable without leading a lot of manipulation to the regs in order for it to happen. So if if it, if you can do it. Pretty much as of right, what's in the regs. You got a much stronger point. You know, the the statement to people often is, you know, if you live next door to an empty lot, don't expect it to be empty forever. But again, you don't expect something to be built there that is not currently allowed either. So that's where the the balance is.
Understood.
The heavy is the crown for you for you all who side on that and for what the town truly needs and Broadbrook probably needs as well. Of bringing in new families, et cetera. So if I'm understanding you correctly, I just want to make sure I I fully get it. You're looking at the regulations and you're stating that MFDD. Uh, is not the pathway that the commission would generally go down, but would generally go down the PRD. Is that correct? Am I hearing that right?
With like your thing.
Yeah, I mean, to go with individual building lots as you desire, I think that's.
Okay, if we pause that and put a a plan unit development. And overlay that with an association of some kind. That allowed to achieve us into that technical multifamily where it is one singular lot and, you know. Area owned in common by others. Does that change the commission's mind to therefore proceed with MFDD?
Just questions, is that an allowable use in R two where your zones now?
I'm sorry.
Is it an allowable use for R two where you're presently zoned R two, right? So if you can find something that you're presently zoned for, you can have a better chance is where I think we're at.
Yeah, R R two does not achieve what we're looking for. It doesn't achieve it at all. Yeah, nothing, nothing works in R two economically in this in this climate, and it probably won't for the foreseeable future with inflation where it is. Just with building, you will not see construction at today's costs to fit in with this. You could sell that lot for zero dollars. The cost of that road to build the house, to build the houses will not be achievable. You will not bring, you you will not add new housing to the town. We've been at nauseam just reading these regulations. We were at nauseam with our building codes. At nauseam with, you know, learning this. We are inside and out every single detail nut, bolt and screw. You cannot build for that cheap or you will get a product that people are very upset about. So you have to decide whether you want to move in a direction where it stays as is. You're not going to be able to develop it where you need to at R two. You can move towards a zone and we're asking for a pathway with a zone change, either to MFDD with an overlay of a PUD and to make it happen that way. Or we could do, change a zone and then move into PRD and achieve it with single family. Thought process is reverse engineer to what the community needs best and find a pathway there through the regs.
I think we've kind of already gone down the checklist that the MFDD would apply to this area. Okay, so if you if you can do the MFDD in this area. Then what is the benefit of doing a a pod versus a?
Single family. The affordability for the consumer, the end person.
Yeah.
It's if we're trying to attain suitable housing and we have to say to people, okay, well, we had. This availability to make this single family homes that would have been cheaper by eighty five bucks to two hundred and fifty dollars per month. Because someone, we needed a management company, we needed an association, we needed people to cut the grass, we needed all this stuff, where someone would probably be like. I'd like to mow my own lawn. And and so you you can either do that and we can.
Again, to, we're kind of in agreement. You're better off going with the.
It's 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 economically and feasible.
The the current density in PRD won't allow us to get to feasibility. That's the issue. So we went down the PRD path. But the the current densities in PRD don't let us get to feasibility. The only then, the only. Path that allows us to that density is MFDD.
Maybe your text in text amendment that you're looking for is an increase in density and MFDD if you're doing a PRD.
Say that again.
Somebody, wait, 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 wait.
Something that I think is a little bit unclear with the regs. I don't think that if you do a PRD, you need a zone change to MFDD. If you have an MFDD zone, you're eligible for a PRD. But the PRD says that it the commission issues references subdivision. There's a PRD section of subdivision regulations and it talks about a special permit. But I think PRD would be special permit and and subdivision. Right. Me, both are going to going to require hearings, but I don't think they would do a subdivision, a zone change. And a special permit if they did PRD. They could skip the zone change and it would be a special permit.
But does the MFDD give them higher density?
They're changing the reg one way or another, what it sounds like.
Why don't they change the density in the planned residential development section?
So have you worked with heat to determine if you can do the lot layout? Have you, has the lot frontage? Has he done a layout that gets you lots that have an approximate size and have an approximate frontage like? Because. Generally, but the PRD route was yielded, it wasn't, he he stopped working on that because it wasn't going to work. You know, he he didn't go that route specifically because it didn't, I can have. Let me say it a different way.
Yes.
In the assuming north is, north is down. So the northern part of the property, you have common driveways, we have multiple houses in the river. That, when you talk about lots, we talk about frontage.
Yeah.
So the only way for that all to happen is if this cul-de-sac becomes a town road. That that's going to change your widths and your construction costs. So. I'm looking at this saying, you may want to do lots, but this layout to me, unless you've already done it. Is going to probably create some challenges with regard to actually creating those lots.
Lots. Yeah.
So the PRD may make sense if you know that that layout will work.
Right.
But it may be harder to actually draw some of that with some with those four, what is it? One, two, it's only four?
Yeah.
There's four structures that are going to be common drives that won't have frontage even on that private road. And.
So then the rear lot requirements are.
What's that? What is it? Newberry Village? That's probably the.
Yeah.
PRD. They're PRD, aren't they? Because they have lots. Is that it? So I'm just thinking the standards for the road are going to change. Some of that other stuff might be more complicated.
Can you do this many rear lots?
Well, with a standard rear lot, the front, the density.
Go through subdivision.
And then the then then he goes back to the traditional density and the the non, he's like. Quarter of lots. Fundamentally, do you guys? Do you, the single lots, does that make sense to you? I mean, the. We think it's a, it's a better route for the end consumer fundamentally. I I guess I wonder, because if we're going to change. If we're going to go PRD route or or whatever route we end up going to get those lots, I guess. Do you see where we're coming from in that sense? I guess is the question, like, do you agree that that would be something that the town would would be good for the town in general? Um, or are we like kind of jumping through hoops to try to get this thing that we think would be better for the end consumer? When a PUD is actually something that the town might rather.
I mean. I'm just thinking what else is in this town. I don't think there really are any. PUDs in town that are not age restricted. It's there. I don't think one exists in town. So it would be the unicorn would be unusual to do it that way.
Would be unique.
Yeah. Um, I mean.
It is what Merrick asked to build.
That's what I feel like. It's what that whole conversation was about.
All those, that one through five that was built by Merrick is for a a development of.
This concept.
Small, single family detached. Some amenity.
But he was going to have a a a PUD. He was not going to have individual deeded lots on his.
Right, because his, the road was already in.
And he wanted, I'll say, shared amenities.
Yeah.
So you had to have a association or whatever.
So, yeah, that would have been the first, but never came to fruition.
Yeah, understood. And not to go around and around, but I guess like the idea is if it's. That attainable price, but then we add the HOA fee, it's almost as if the house is now six hundred thousand dollars or six hundred and fifty thousand. And that's kind of, that's our.
Cost that lasts forever.
You're not paying it down.
Never paying it off.
Exactly. And it's probably going up.
Yep.
So that's.
You have no control.
Right.
Your destiny.
A lot of people in Florida move when their, when their.
Yeah.
Association fees go to the.
It's funny, it's funny you say that's a rabbit trail, but I just did a an article on how many people move and where they come from in Connecticut. The stats just came out that, you know, forty percent of the people who move to Connecticut are from New York. And then the next is Massachusetts, do high taxes. And the third one is Florida, and it's mostly, that is what we get the calls from. It's, I'm back down here, everything's association, have to move back. So. I'm I'm not negating that. If the commission is open minded to it, we're, we are committed to seeing a great product get delivered. And if that's what needs to happen, then. We can find some way to make a P U D work. We just felt that if we reverse engineer from the ideal outcome, then that's probably the best way.
I hope you were helpful.
We just don't know which way to go now. So, no, to answer that directly. Um, and we've met several times with Mike and Ruth Ann.
Yeah, because otherwise they're going to have to build a town road.
Yeah.
If you build a traditional subdivision with lots, you're going to have to build a town road. So even if you do individual lots, I think you're going to need some type of association to address the private roadway.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I don't know, you have to look at laying some of that stuff out, but. Asking the town to accept the road and build it into that standard.
Yeah.
That's going to increase. Yeah, I don't think it's going to. So you could might be able to get somewhere with lots, but I still think it's going to be something.
So just for direction and for the sake of everyone's time, it sounds like MFDD with a P U D overlay is the best idea. In order to achieve the density that we're looking at. Is that correct? Okay. And would the commission be open minded in order to go from our current pathway, our current state of R two zoning? Into an MFDD zone?
I mean, the way we read the regs, you're entitled to, you don't.
Yeah.
That's not something that needs our approval.
Okay, so if we met with you next month, that's likely what you'll see is a proposal that's very similar to this, except going through MFDD with an association. Uh, a P U D relay on it. Um, the only thing that I think that we're looking for is a a way to not have it age restricted.
I'm not sure you 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 need to go the MFDD if you go to PRD. I don't think it's required. Do you read it? I think it requires a special permit, but your zone is eligible.
Yeah.
Means you need a text amendment to fix the PRD.
Yeah.
And then a special permit and subdivision application for the PRD.
Okay. All right. Think.
So basically Mike is saying he needs to see if he can carve it up, carve up the land to get enough lots through the PRD.
Well, they're going to have to amend the density calculation, no matter what reg they touch. But I don't think the PRD in and of itself requires the zone change to an MFDD if your underlying zone is eligible. That's the way that I read it.
Or we see maybe some misunderstanding, then we not doing individual lots for this, we're seeing one common. Common area, or are you suggesting that we are able to achieve those? Because my my thought was it. Because my my thought was it, it contradicted itself as soon as you do the individual lots, you need the frontage.
And the road checks to change.
I think you could get there with a PRD, but your costs for everything else are gonna spiral and it's gonna become not feasible. That's my guess.
So therefore, it's not chopping it up into individual lots anymore.
So I would, I would maybe ask your engineer to look at that. If we had to do this to build, to make sure the road was correct, get the lot frontage in and start looking at that, then with those two, no, four rear buildings, I don't know how you.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. That's a whole lot of, you know, comma and if then, oh, so I don't know.
Yeah.
But I gotta just go fix the whole MFDD reg. It was like no one.
And I and I guess if you can create your association with the lowest possible cost that, you know.
Yeah.
You don't offer lawn care and you don't offer at all, take care of the snow removal, you might be able to keep that.
Yeah, see, that's not, yeah, private road, take care of the snow removal, clean up brush around the exterior a couple of times a year, like, that's reasonable, like thirty-three units.
In the roads and then it's removal, right?
Yeah, that's not a.
Then what about sidewalks? What about streetlights?
Well, traditionally, somebody has to, you know, clean their own sidewalk unless they include total snow removal driveways and everything.
Be owned by the individual houses and become their problem. That's how they do it in Florida.
Oh.
And you have to change the bulb.
I think.
We appreciate. Wow.
Goodbye to the regs.
Yeah, we'll say goodbye and thank you. Uh, if you don't mind, we'll just take those.
Sure.
Thank you, guys, for the time.
Yes, have a great night.
You too.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Next item we have is draft sign regulations revisions. So.
Sets of glasses over it sometimes. It's real horrible, really embarrassing.
I don't know, I'd say it's a font size four, like, I'm like.
Yeah.
Right, that's. We've been through this a couple of times. I guess I have one question in in the handouts we gave us.
Yep.
Six oh two point six B is highlighted. Uh, is there something that changed there? See the pink in there?
Yeah, we tried. So there's down on North Road. Some signs were approved. Making sure this is, that are just above the the roof line. It used to be down below.
I know which one you're talking.
Yeah, across there.
Yeah.
Um, it looks pretty good there, to be honest with you. But we're just trying to find a way, like, if we were to allow signage to be mounted, where would we, you know, draw a limit on that? So that that's why that's highlighted for it's new, you haven't.
Well, they don't currently go past the peak of the roof, right?
No.
Yeah, okay.
They're usually not on the roof.
Don't look, game of land.
Right. So.
Well, I mean, what's existing can stay existing, nonconforming, even if we change this. Or even try and.
Correct. Yeah, we're just saying, it looked pretty good there. I mean, it's like.
Makes sense.
It looks to me better than it did.
Yeah.
It was done in error, but it.
But it came out nice.
It, yes. Um, and so we were just, should we allow for it? It's like, and the only one thing that I would say is like the the biggest downfall could be ice and snow accumulation behind signage.
Written off the ribbon, the signs off.
Well, that's where. Yeah, there has to be provisions for that.
So. It came up, so we thought maybe we could put something in there.
Okay. Was that the only area that got tweaked?
Now you can read it. Well, my kind of doubt against your.
All right, so we're actually using the word waiver. Waiver is probably not the right word to use. As you said, we can't rent waivers.
Well, unless they're, unless you're allowing your regs to grant it. If it's written in your regulations for a very specific thing, like your hundred foot buffer that you can waived. Like, that.
Being a little, I guess they use the word wave in there.
You see word wave in that one. I just know that in speaking with the town attorney's office at one point, um that came up. If it's it's in your reg, that if if the commission is given for that very specific thing.
Would we accomplish the same thing by using the word modification?
Could just add some filler language to the break itself, just as the commission may allow alternative placement when it finds in case. And because it sounds to me like what you're describing, I don't know anything about any of this, is that it's the most appropriate place.
Mm hmm.
So if the commission finds that there's a, you know, that some building is designed that that's a a more appropriate location, then it's not gonna do that. I think you could. Is there sometimes are strange buildings that just this doesn't make sense or or something looks weird or you could potentially just, you know, add a a qualifier, could be a wall sign, there could be any sign, the commission could allow for the modification or if it makes those fine. To use your word.
Modification at the discretion of the commission.
Just the word waiver kind of sends chills up my spine.
You should find location.
And modification, so just change the word waiver to modification?
Just use, you need to say placement.
I know I'm kind of speaking personally. You guys in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Granted the discretion, that kind of leaves us.
And then that was the only change from the last time that we've seen this?
I had one question. Six oh two three residential end use. And below it, it says this section shall apply to all districts, all zoning districts. What you mean, it sounds like it's something different than the sign. It's it sounds it's residential and it says the section shall apply to all zoning districts, kind of, kind of spells it out.
I think what we were going after there was there are residential uses in the business districts. And so she was trying to pull out that the sign regulations wouldn't necessarily apply to a residence that was located in a business district. I mean, I think that was the intention.
I get it.
Yeah.
It just said land use.
Well, residential.
And below it describes.
How about residential uses if we can't call residential land uses a land use?
Yeah, that sounds worth it a point.
So you just want to strike the word land, residential uses. So we strike the word land.
And that way, it it'll go with that, you know.
So basically, if I understand what we're trying to say is if a sign is at a residence, we're not regulating. We don't want to regulate.
It's not for commercial purposes. Yeah. So just for consistency, I would suggest six oh two point four, say, business and industrial uses and not just me, so that it's the same.
So then it says it only applies to business and industrial zoning districts. So if you have a grandfathered business that is not in a business zone.
We could, I actually had crossed out business and industrial and put zoning. So it'll be just like up above at six oh two point three. This section shall apply to all zoning districts. We could put the same thing.
Yes.
Um, and six oh two point four, and it'll be.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got strict stuff, but now it's getting clearer.
Yeah. And then, um, there was a typo that was pointed out in six six oh two point one four. Where we tried to, um, bring it to the fifteen days notice, but it says ten. So I'm gonna write the word fifteen where says ten and then paren- parenthetically, parenthetically fifteen.
And I go back to business and industrial, yes. So if the application we saw tonight for somebody having a fitness and whatever business in their house. It's a house, it's a residence. But it's also a business, so do they get a sign? It's regulated or because it's also a house, is it?
Home occupation.
A home occupation, they are unregulated.
So where we struck out single and three family dwellings, who will replace it with home businesses? Under residential uses?
That would be a good place to put it.
To home businesses. What do you, one sign and what square footage or? Does it stay with?
It might be in the section.
Maybe somebody's doing taxes at their houses. They say, you know, tax corporation.
You got all kinds.
Right.
If it's not regulated, there's your twelve by twenty-four sign. Straight gas serving parts business out of their house.
Temperature. Maybe this the the square feet is.
Yeah.
The right number, but it's a one and a half square.
If you run it with something higher and then you go down. Probably just did the top, something like that.
Okay, we'll add size on there.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
No, I just want to say that I sat this afternoon with Ruth Ann and she scraped me out on a lot of questions I had. Save your time here.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. You need any action from the commission or?
Okay, can I tweak it and send it up to Craig?
I think based on what we've discussed, make those modi- we don't need to see it another time.
No. Here's a public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could definitely send that off. And, uh, in your package, we also got copies of the last two other amendments, text amendments that we did the short term rentals and the good steel solar. Or just for your reading pleasure. Yeah. Not have any correspondence this evening? No business meeting? We don't have a need for an executive sessions? Anybody doesn't have anything else, so entertain a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all for all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-five.